Hey, making good people defenseless does not make bad people harmless. Gun control laws only disarm the law abiding. Thinking about it, all the regulations and restrictions around firearms only make it harder for people like you to defend themselves. Help us fight back and become a member of San Diego County Gun Owners. We make activism easy. Join today. Go to sdcgo.org/join and sign up to become a member. Together we will win.
Together we will win. That is our motto. So we have a bunch going on. We have Sasha from Turning Point in the studio today and we're going to talk to Sasha a little bit later, but I wanted to stop and say welcome and thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Yes ma'am. And Alicia will be here. She's, she's fashionably late as always. And of course me and Dave, but I wanted to, there's, there's some hot off the press stuff going on. There's some cool stuff happening, like we had a one and 30 victory so that against the law that bans you from buying more than one firearm a month. So that's very cool. And then we have our March monthly meetings coming up, but I want to get right to Jim Miller. Jim Miller is a founding board member of San Diego County Gun Owners and he's on the Cajon Valley School Board. You also know him because he is the Miller in the Miller versus Bonta case. And there's some shenanigans, I guess is maybe the best way to phrase it, happening at the Cajon Valley School Board that I wanted you to be aware of because Jim's running for reelection and, and we need to do everything we need to do in order to get him elected. So Jim, are you there? Jim Miller on the phone.
I think we're going after him. You got him?
No, no Jim yet, sorry.
Oh, no Jim yet? Well, well, that's fantastic. Well, tell us more about it. What are the shenanigans? I like shenanigans.
Hold on here, I gotta get him on the phone.
Well, that's what we have our illustrious manager.
Okay, so basically, I just saw he was on the phone guy, sorry. He is being attacked by another board member and it's, I wanted to get to the bottom of it really. I, I have some details and the board member, the other guy is a guy named Anthony Carnavale and he's been a constant problem frankly, since he got there. And he's actually running somebody against Jim Miller as if, and implying that Jim Miller isn't conservative enough or whatever. I mean, Jim Miller is a superstar. Jim Miller was the, you know, he was there running, or I'm sorry, he was there on the board fighting back against the ridiculousness of COVID. He was the one who said, you know, when they did like, when they said, hey, we want to get some, some trans activists to read to your kids. He was the one that said, nope, that's not going to happen. He, you know, he's, he's the one who said, no, we're not going to do a bunch of anti-gun stuff. We're going to secure our school. I mean, he's Mr. Conservative. He's Mr. Republican. Jim Miller's been a Republican for decades and he's done a fantastic job. So I don't fully understand what is going on with Anthony Carnavale. And we've tried to kind of work it out and talk about it, but he keeps getting ridiculous. I'm just going to read a little bit. A few days ago after a fellow board member, Jim Miller's ridiculous and failed attempt to get my wife kicked out of a philanthropic organization which she and I have been a part of for our entire adult lives citing his misrepresentation over public comment as a concerned mother at a school board, slanders claims that we are parents, et cetera, et cetera. Consistent with board authority, wrestling with the board as a whole, members of the board shall not use district or board stationery to communicate or any issue on any issue that has not been approved and/or authorized by the board. This is the latest example of apparent pattern, et cetera, et cetera. So basically it sounds like Anthony Carnavale has been abusing his position on the board. And you know, and is mad at Jim for pointing it out, but I wanted to get the full story from Jim because Jim, I gotta tell you, there's not a whole lot of people out in East County that are more trusted and respected than Jim Miller. So you know, if somebody has concerns or a difference of opinion like Anthony apparently does, okay, let's talk about it. But when you freak out as much as Anthony has freaked out and when you behave the way Anthony has behaved and you know, there are so many other people that are, that are stalwart supporters of Jim Miller, you gotta kind of go, this isn't Jim, you know, this is the other guy. It can't be everyone else. It's gotta be you, Anthony Carnavale. Jim, are you there?
I'm here, thanks Mike.
You bet. Okay, so I'm not sure how much you heard, but let me just kind of recap. So Anthony Carnavale had what's, had a fit, what's, what's kind of become a very characteristic fit, you know, a habitual fit on the dais the other night. And I really wanted, it's had something to do with his wife and him abusing his position on the board. And I wanted you to come on and clarify as much as you can and give details because he's all over social media making claims. And I want to make sure that you're, you know, that you get your, you can speak your piece.
I appreciate that Mike. So the unfortunate thing is when you think about it long-term, Anthony and I, we have to some extent, we have very similar goals. We're both Republicans, but I look at things in such a way as I don't care who gets the credit. I don't care where the good idea comes, let's have good ideas. And he is very much, if he doesn't get the credit and if it's not his idea, then we just can't do it because it has to be something wrong. It has to be some sort of hidden agenda. He sees a, unfortunately, he sees a conspiracy theory under every piece of paper. He's openly said he wants to fire our superintendent, which I can understand how superintendents throughout California that assisted in keeping schools locked down during COVID and just followed the, the hard left party line, they should probably be evaluated. But as you mentioned earlier, we were the largest public school system that stayed open during COVID. That does not happen just because the board says so, right? That's a collaborative effort of the superintendent, the cabinet, the, the staff, all of the bargaining units. In Cajon Valley, up until 13 months ago, we had a pretty good, well-oiled machine going. Stayed open during COVID, got rid of the masks update. I was able to write curriculum where boys don't get credit for competing against girls in BE. We got the You Belong CV this past year put together, which got rid of the, the far-left, you know, gay pride flag and their propaganda. So now it goes to our, our counselors because we're one of the few kindergarten through eighth grade districts, we actually have counselors at every single school site, that's 27 school sites. So now kids that do have a problem, whether it's just a regular bullying issue or a bad day at home or a transgender issue that really does exist for that young child, they now have access to real services. But Anthony, and I hate that it becomes somewhat the Anthony show, if he doesn't get his way, I've never seen this. He literally will fold his arms and sit in his seat on the dais and refuse to vote. He did that for a special vote on a special meeting.
He's done that a couple times, Jim, and I, and what I, and you've made the, I think part of the reason that there's even, that he even has room is that you have been so, such a team player. Like you're not out there pounding your chest saying, hey, look, me, 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 look what I did. And it's, it's surprising to me that this guy, I'm going, what are you talking about? Everything that you're complaining about Anthony Carnavale is, you know, Jim's been the solution for, and I understand people's frustration, especially parents during COVID and during the last few years. And they're like, that's it, I'm getting involved. So you have a bunch of kind of these Johnny come latelys who haven't done anything, haven't accomplished anything politically, and they're looking for a target. And I'm going, wait a minute, Jim Miller, he's a good guy. He is the good guy in fact. So, but he's absolutely pointing the guns wrong. He's pointing the guns the wrong way. But here's what I want to know, we're about to go to break. So we've, we've talked about his behavior, we've talked about some of the great things you've done. We've talked about how there's a difference of opinion. I want to talk more about when we get back, what exactly is his beef? Like what is he trying to get done that he can't get done? You know, what specifically is his problem, I guess is where we're going. So we'll talk about it after.
Sounds good Mike.
All right folks, this is Gun Owners Radio FM 961 AM 1178.
The answer.
Hi, this is Ken Anderson from Walter Anderson Nursery. Garden Talk is back on the air. Join David Ross, Mark Mahady, George Alman and myself.
Really? Holy shit, I recognize it now. I see where that, wow, they really gutted it. So that's the other thing is when.
Are we YouTubeing right now?
Oh, sorry everybody.
I saw your post about that.
So Sasha, by the, so right now we're like on YouTube, but the other thing is when you're talking to the mic, get right up on it. Okay.
Yeah, there are like differences. They have like a big poker one or they have like a little one.
See, you know what you're, you should be teaching us.
Yeah, well, you gotta get closer to the mic because you're on right now.
So, all right, so we just started doing this where we talk to people and there's like nobody, nobody has any, nobody on YouTube has any questions, concerns.
Nobody watched Shooter last night?
Hey Thor, how you doing man?
Thor always listens.
There you are, there's you on camera. Look at you.
Absolutely. I was gonna say, there's no dead air, but I guess.
Well, I don't know, it's YouTube, so we're allowed to have a little dead air on YouTube.
Yeah, you can't have dead air.
There, nobody's asking any questions, so.
How come?
I don't know.
I don't know, don't you hate that?
I don't know, but you know what's funny? I'll tell you, how many, you know what's hilarious? I don't watch movies, I don't really pay attention to Grammys or Oscars, I don't even know what they are exactly. So this Barbie movie comes out, right?
You went and seen it?
No, I didn't see it, but it's like this, like women's empowerment movie, right? This feminist icon movie.
Well, yeah, I've not seen it either, but.
Are we on the radio or just on YouTube?
No, we're still on YouTube.
So, okay, great, fine, whatever. But then, you know, and Hollywood's always lecturing us, right? We're all a bunch of sexist bigots or whatever. Okay, great, so you made a movie. Great, fantastic. And I thought that was kind of creative, take Barbie and make that message, fantastic. But then, when Hollywood goes to pat itself on the back and give all these awards, what wins? Well, the most talked about performance in that movie is Ken, the guy.
Exactly.
And the song he sang about how hard it is to be a man.
Oh, and you should hear the uproar over that.
Is it really? I haven't heard anything, I've just kind of noticed that, but the other.
AM 1170.
The answer.
Hey Gun Owners, listen up. If you ever have legal matters that involve firearms, you need California's best firearms lawyer and that means John Dillon. He can help you with red flag laws, gun registration, gun transportation, or maybe you just need to know that your guns are California compliant. John Dillon specializes in California gun laws, so put his number on your phone right now, 760-642-7150. That's John Dillon, California firearm lawyer, 760-642-7150.
So we're talking to Jim Miller from Cajon Valley School Board. He's also the Miller from Miller versus Bond, the assault weapons ban lawsuit that we're winning. And, and then he's also a founding board member of San Diego County Gun Owners. We're talking about a colleague who's behaving badly, who's been unruly. We can't quite figure out how or, we know how, but why. He's, he's just kind of, he's kind of going off the deep end and it, there doesn't really seem to be a substantive reason. So we've been talking to him, or at least trying to, and you know, he's got somebody running against Jim despite the fact that there are two open seats. There are two open seats that need to get filled, one by appointment, one in November. And instead, he picks somebody to take out Second Amendment champion and, and Republican and conservative advocate, Jim Miller. That's what he chooses to do. And the person he picks, this guy Alex, what's his name? Alex Welling. The only political involvement we can find he's been in is a picture of him standing next to a bunch of anti-gun politicians who he's raising money for to get reelected. Fantastic Anthony, you're doing a bang up job there buddy. So Jim, what exactly is Anthony trying, like what is the, the meat of the, of the disagreement? What does he want that he's not getting?
What he's not getting Mike is he's not getting his way as far as having the superintendent fired. And again, he's completely discounting that this is a superintendent that has created cutting edge curriculum, has kept our kids open during COVID. And one other thing, I mean, our superintendent was on the Department of Education's task force that put together digital literacy. I mean, our guy's done a really, really good job now. Everybody has their drawbacks. I'm not going to say he's perfect because he's not. But because the rest of the board doesn't want to just, you know, baby out with the bath water on our superintendent, Anthony's scorched earth game, tried to get all of the other quote unquote Republicans, and he uses that term because he doesn't consider us Republicans for whatever reason, tries to get us off the board. So because of that.
So it's all because of the superintendent? That's really what it boils down to?
That's, that is the crux of what I've been able to figure out. Because if you look at what we do, how can he argue with it? Right? He's, he's, he's a conservative Republican in, in theory. What votes have we made as Republicans on this board that don't match up with that alignment, right? We've balanced budgets, right? We're not voting in the red. We're not laying off teachers. You've probably seen on the, on the news, you know, San Diego Unified is laying off 500 staff, right? Because in March, they haven't met their budget. So we're not doing that. We were open during COVID, which is a huge thing, I think, for conservatives and people that want choice. We got, I helped get rid of the mask mandate. I put kids back in school, or probably back in sports, all the things that you would think you would want. So what else could it be?
That's what I'm trying to figure out, truly. And there's not, Jim, there's not a political leader out in East County, and I'm not just talking about elected. I'm talking about, you know, community leaders out there who tend to agree with us on issues. There's barely one out there that, that, they're all scratching their head over Anthony's behavior. They're going, hey, we've known Jim for a long time, he's making all the right choices here. So, okay.
Like I have tried to bounce this off of so many people. And, and Anthony and I sit on a philanthropy board where he's basically been okay up until recently, which is one of the issues that has arisen.
That's what I want to get into, this, this philanthropic thing and his wife. Talk about that. What exactly is going on there?
So one of Anthony's self-anointed advisors is a lady named Priscilla Schreiber who herself was somewhat of a disgraced former school board member at the Grossmont Union School Board. She got kind of excommunicado from the Republican Party. We're doing exactly what Anthony's doing, continuously going after Republicans instead of going after Democrats. And she comes to every board meeting, she pulls speaker cards at every card and she calls herself Anthony's advisor. Well, she is president of Literacy First Charter School. And the East County Posse, we put together over $45,000 in money to give these needy kids.
Yeah, that, the East County Posse, by the way, explain that name a little bit. The East County Posse is a philanthropic organization that, it's just a bunch of well-meaning folks out in East County who raise a bunch of money and grant it out to people with all kinds of different needs. It's a really, really great philanthropic thing. So that's what he means by East County Posse, just to be clear. So go ahead.
Right. So yeah, we, we have 100 members, mostly contractors, developers. I'm one of the few token lawyers. I've been on the board of that, of that organization for eight years. And it's a hand up, not hand out. We do a lot of things, the East County Transitional Living Center, Boys to Men After School Programs, et cetera. So in November, we selected a handful of school districts and schools to contact and find out which of their families and kids had needs, which of them were unhoused, which of them had problems in the household that needed help around the holidays. And we gifted gift cards depending on whether it was one student or whether it was multiple students in a family. We went through a vetting process, we went through the district personnel, all of this. In the 11th hour, literally two days before Christmas, three days before Christmas, Anthony puts a blast out to the entire committee, of which none of them, other than the eight board members, knew what the vetting process was as to how we selected the other schools and said, hey, I want to give $3,500 to Literacy First Charter, they've identified a handful of kids. Well, it's right before Christmas and our community is of a philanthropist, is fantastic. Of course we all said yes, but we all said yes before anybody realized Priscilla Schreiber, who was again, his political advisor, his president of Literacy First, so he basically used philanthropy money as a payoff to his political advisor without going through any of the pre-vetting and analysis process that we all did to get to the other school districts, the public school districts.
Okay.
And that didn't sit well with me.
That could, yeah, just, just to kind of recap here Jim, so you guys give out money, you went through a vetting process. At the last minute, he said, hey, wait, 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 I found some more folks. You guys said, okay, hey, you know, it's three, four days for Christmas, let's, let's fast track this to make sure these kids have a nice Christmas. And then come to find out, it was just kind of a, it was, it was kind of a, kind of a.
A payback.
A payback, but I, it was, it appears to have been legal, but questionably ethical.
Exactly, because here's the problem. We know we can't help every kid in East County, right? So we made hard decisions. We decided not to include Alpine School District. We decided not to include the Humble Desura School District. We decided not to include the Mountain Empire School District. Good, good districts that probably had kids that we could have helped. We made those hard decisions because you have to when you have limited funds. So when he comes in in the 11th hour with somebody who had not even been mentioned, didn't exist, and then he wants to give them money? Again, the committee, the 30-member committee says yes, because they don't know all of the vetting process that we did as a board and nobody but myself and maybe one other person realized at the time, oh, wait a minute, that school that Anthony wants to give money to is directly related to his political assistant and advisor.
Wow, okay, so he steps right over other, other needy kids and, and his political advisor or whatever gets a payoff. Again, not implying any of this is illegal, but certainly unethical and, and you know, just kind of.
Well, so then what happened?
Well, nothing happened. He's off of our board as a president in three months, so we, I kind of just let it go.
Well, what, what happened at the board meeting though? Because he, he brought it up and said something about his wife and philanthropic something or other.
Well, that comes up because the conversation that was privately had, he somehow got ahold of. And I, nobody pursued it. It's a complete fabrication that anybody was trying to forcibly push him off the board. There was a discussion, but nobody brought it to the, the posse board. That was not done, complete lie.
Oh, and he's saying that, and he's basically saying, so he's basically saying that you guys are trying to throw him off the board.
Him and his wife, that's his, that's his contention, even though we decided not to do that because he comes off the board anyways in June. He's done. So we let it go. Then all of a sudden, he brings it up at a school board meeting. Why are you bringing a private philanthropies internal workings on blast in a public school board meeting? Those two things do not go hand in hand. He's actually violation of the Brown Act by exceeding the terms and the conditions of what a board report, which is supposed to be a brief comment about your activities with the school district and nothing else, was supposed to be, so he's very, very particular when he says that you have to follow all of these procedures to the T.
When it suits him. Yeah, when it suits him.
Well, yeah.
But when it comes to getting money to his buddies, then that's a whole different story. All right, Jim.
Oh yeah, it's just on him, right?
Yeah, we, okay, so we, I think we covered this fairly well. I wanted to tell everybody about this and make sure that we, we keep this up. I gotta tell you, there are a handful of very, very, very important elections coming up in 2024, November. And Jim Miller for Cajon Valley School Board is one of them. It is definitely a statement, if, if Jim doesn't get elected, it's a statement against San Diego County Gun Owners, him being a founding board member. It's a statement against, you know, the assault weapons ban that he's a, he's, he's been brave enough to put his name on, on the, on the lawsuit. This is something that we really want to focus on and make sure that we make a, we make a strong statement in our favor. If, if someone is trying to get a pro-gun advocate like Jim Miller, you know, kicked off a board, we San Diego County Gun Owners have to prove that, hey, you know what? That's not going to happen on our watch, so.
There you go.
All right, Jim, do you have a website yet?
Yep, millerforschoolboard.com guys. Miller for School Board, F O R dot com has all my information, biography. You can, you can make a donation, I'd appreciate it. But we kept the anti-gun crazies out, let's keep that going.
Everybody, everybody go there, millerforschoolboard and give them 25 bucks right now.
That'd be great.
Thanks Jim.
Thanks Jim.
Thanks guys.
All right, hey folks, this is Gun Owners Radio FM 961 AM 1178.
The answer.
For centuries, a cord with a lead weight on one end called a plumb line has been used to determine if something is straight and true. For centuries.
Can I? Sure. You're just nicest guy.
So, okay, so, all right, so we're talking about Barbie, right? So it's like this big feminist movie, Ken gets all the appreciation.
Now you have to go see it.
I'm not going to go see it.
Come on.
So, did you see it?
I scrolled through it.
Yeah, you scrolled through it? How do you scroll through it?
I was trying to watch it in the full scene, but then I was like, I can't do it.
Did you see it online or something or?
Yeah.
Okay, I was gonna say, you're sitting in a movie theater going.
I would never go for a movie theater.
But here's the other funny part. So Hollywood is like, all right, let's give out some awards and the same Hollywood people who are telling us how sexist we are, you know, so we had, you had to make this movie. They, they're like, okay, well, we're gonna, we're gonna give all of our awards to Oppenheimer. Oppenheimer, a movie about a guy who invented something to win a war. Like, you know, like the absolute, you know, complete opposite of feminism, you know, and what feminists hate where, you know, there's kind of this old joke where it's like, well, gee, men invent everything. No, they don't, okay, well, there were two movies head, head to head, a feminist movie and a guy, and a movie about a guy who invented something to win a war. And guess who won? It's so ridiculous, so many times, like these, these criticisms coming from Hollywood, it's like this internal, it's, it's like, it's like an internal family feud. It's like the rest of the normal country, we're out like raising kids and paying taxes and working a job. And they're like, hey, everybody's a sexual predator. Oh, you mean directors and producers in Hollywood that you guys are, like, who are you talking about? Because the rest of us are construction workers and attorneys and plumbers and stuff like that. So they have like this big, you know, what's the Me Too movement, right?
Yeah.
Against other Hollywood people. It's not normal people out in the world. It's this, it's so bizarre and they did it again. This, this whole like, hey, everybody, you know, you guys are all anti-women, so we're going to put this Barbie movie out and we're going to show you what's important and then we're going to praise the only guy in the movie and we're going to praise the song about how hard it is to be a guy and then we're going to give all these awards to a guy who invented something to win a war.
Radio FM 961 AM 1178.
The answer.
Hey, you want to learn to fly? Well, you can get your pilot's license because San Diego is one of the best places to get your license because pilots can fly almost every day. You can learn to fly with San Diego Flight Training International. Gun Owners Radio listeners, check this out. You get one hour, one hour of ground school, one hour of flight with an instructor. Yep, you get to fly. That's a $400 value, but for our listeners, you get to only pay 350. Give them a call today, 858-569-1822. Learn to fly with SDFDI or just call them, 858-569-1822 and head to the skies.
Okay, our next guest is becoming a frequent flyer on Gun Owners Radio and you only get to be a frequent flyer if you're interesting. So that's why he gets to come back so often and I'm really happy to have him back. It's Don Mann, how are you Don?
Hey Rich, good, thanks. How you doing?
Good, good, good. So, okay, so Don, so tell people a little bit about who you are. You, you were a SEAL, you spent a bunch of time in the Navy. Talk a little bit about your resume.
All righty Rich, and thanks for having me on your show.
Michael, actually, Rich is the producer. Michael, I'm the, I'm the host, one of the hosts.
Oh, okay, I'm so sorry.
No, that's all right. Listen, I've been called worse than Rich.
Well, yeah, I was in the Navy for a little over 20 years. And initially, when I got in, I served with the Marine Corps, waiting for orders for BUDS. And then I graduated BUDS and served SEAL Team One, SEAL Team Two and SEAL Team Six. Then got out, went to work with different agencies, CIA mainly, State Department, US Marshals. And a parallel career, I was doing high-end adventure sports and climbing mountains and trying to keep a high-end adventure life going.
That, and that high-end adventure life, we, we talked a lot about that last time and you told us about some of the things you did in those adventures and it's crazy. It was absolutely insane that anybody, any human being can accomplish that.
Well, you know, there's a lot of people have accomplished a lot more as well. And it just, I think it's just a testament to the fact that you put your mind to something, you can get it done. And, uh, you know, I've done two Ironmans in a day, which a lot of people think, wow, that's pretty big. But there's also people who've done 10 and 20 and 30 Ironmans back to back to back.
Wait, wait, wait. You did two Ironmans in one day, Don?
Yep, yep.
Did you take a nap in between?
Yeah. Was there a nap? It's a good question. It's a good question. I like that. That's your first question. Did you take a nap? So Sasha, Sasha, how many Ironmans have you done in a day? Any? Yeah, me either. He's done two. That's crazy. That's insane. So did you do one full Ironman and then just turn around and do another? Or how did that happen?
Well, it ends up in a double iron. You do a 4.8 swim and then the 224 mile bike.
Oh, I see.
Marathon, the 52.4 mile run.
That's still crazy. Well, that's awesome. How, how long does it take you to do two Ironmans?
Well, that took over, that took over a full day. That went into, uh, almost 28 hours.
Jeez.
But, you know, initially the swim wasn't that bad. The bike ride, your legs get very worn out. And the last thing you feel like doing is running two marathons, but the first marathon went by okay. But at mile 32, I started seeing the white spots and started dry heaving a bit and I passed out. And, uh, when I woke up on the lawn, some other cyclists were riding by and some other runners and, uh, I was wondering why I was sleeping outside, but I didn't realize that, um, I was in this double Ironman. I had to get up and wipe the bile from my face and, uh, went and got my award. And it just goes to show that if you're really pushing yourself and you start making excuses like this is too hard, I can't do it, you're really wrong. Because if something is too hard, your body does you the favor and you pass out, you get the needed sleep, 15, 20 minute power nap and you get up and finish the event and, um, you're okay. There are no long lasting effects or anything.
Just like that. You make it, you make it sound so easy, Don.
It's one of those things, one foot in front of the other and you finally get there. It wasn't very fast, but, um.
I did hear somebody, I, I heard a guy who, a triathlete opining on, uh, he said, uh, he said, uh, he was talking about how, he said, you know, I, I think, uh, you know, I swim pretty fast, but I don't swim as fast as a shark. But I know I can bike faster than a shark. So really, if we were in a triathlon together, it would come down to the, to the run. You know, and he probably could take the shark is what, is what he opined. So I don't know. Anyway.
Yeah.
It's kinda ridiculous. I thought it was funny though. Okay. So as a speaker, you've done, you, you, you do a lot of, uh, a lot of, uh, um, motivational speaking. Um, you're of course a New York Times bestselling author. Um, you, you've, you actually were the, were or are the host of, uh, uh, the mission, Surviving, Surviving Man and Surviving Man All Stars. Um, what is the most memorable of your speaking engagements?
Well, you know, and I knew you were gonna ask me that, so I thought about it. I actually gave it a lot of thought. And I, uh, what I did is the first one that came to mind was when the SEALs were shot down. And, um, you know, remember August 6th, 2011, the last, but the worst day in SEAL Team history.
Was that the, uh, that was like, it was like they were in a, in a, I believe it was, they were in a Chinook over in, in the Middle East, not, not the. Okay. Yes. I, I remember. Yes.
Yep. Yeah. They were being called, you know, their army brothers were, were in harm's way. They were in a firefight and the SEALs jumped in. We had four assault teams, basically one full assault team jumped in the helo. And, uh, they all got shot up out of the sky and they all died. And, um, it was the worst day in SEAL Team history, but, um, so I spoke with a couple of their families and quite a few family members. Those were the hardest talks I ever did. And, uh, especially the, the quality of these men, like for instance, the first one I did, his name was Nick Null. And this was back in 2011 and he and other 17 SEALs died. And, uh, the helo was shot, it was a CH47 shot down with an RPG. But, uh, he was such a great guy. He, uh, a high education, you know, is an athlete, is top of his class and everything he did. He was at SEAL Team Six and he was just one of those guys who had everything in the world going for him. Talk about being decorated. He had two bronze medals, had a Purple Heart Defensive Military Service Medal, two Navy Marine Corps medals for combat action. I mean, this guy was such a stud and he was a young guy getting ready to be married. And, um, he, he was shot, but also in that helo, I also spoke with another family with Brian Bill. And, um, and he was also in that helo. And when I was doing that talk, I, I felt like I, I, I didn't deserve to be there. Because you asked me what my background was and I said, you know, triathlete, adventure racer, mountaineer and all that. Well, Brian Bill was the same, except for, you know, I have a college degree. He had an Ivy League college degree. I liked listening to music. He was a great musician. You know what I mean? Everything I did, he did all the more. And he was just, and people called him super compassionate and humble and he was a great family man. Every picture I've ever seen of him, he was just smiling. And we were both from Connecticut. But I got pretty close with his dad and his, his stepmom. And I just saw his dad's eyes while I was talking. He was thinking, well, my son was everything that guy is and more. And now my son is gone. So those, those were the two hardest I ever did.
I can't imagine.
And then, um, my C dad, what I, you know, in the Navy, you have what, in the SEALs, you have what's called a C daddy. A guy you really looked up to and respected. And, um, and he was my commander a few times during the Panama invasion. He was my commander. He's just a war legend. He's a legendary hero in the SEAL Teams. And he, he was like a, a super very close friend of mine and my boss. And he, we went in the CIA together and, um, he came back home after deployment overseas. It was just on a treadmill running in place. And he died of one of those, you know, clots to get in your legs from sitting on a flight too long.
Jeez.
So speaking of his funeral, at my C daddy's funeral, and the way he died, it was just, those three got me the worst, I'd say to.
What was his name?
His name was John Koenig. You know, he was so influential that people in the team used to carry that, his picture in their books, you know, their daily planners because he, he inspired so much confidence. He was just a tough, tough, good guy. And you certainly didn't want to be on the wrong side of him. I remember once we, we captured a bunch of prisoners and I had about 20 prisoners and me and another SEAL had them at gunpoint. And Johnny had a bunch of prisoners and he was with a translator. And, uh, we had them stripped down so we could see if they had weapons. And Johnny was yelling, strip down, strip down. And they all stripped down, but his, his tone of voice was intimidating. And one of the guys was scared to death and the guy wasn't stripping down. And Johnny said, I told you to strip down. And, um, the guy wanted, so he told the interpreter, shoot him, shoot him in the head, shoot him. And he's just intense. Of course he wasn't gonna shoot him, but then the guy got the message and he stripped down. But there are hundreds of stories like that with, uh, Johnny Koenig.
What do you?
Nice. Stay in touch with his daughter, which is nice.
Oh, very nice. So how, you know, just going into the military is tough, you know, going into the Navy is tough. And then going into, uh, the, you know, uh, the, the SEAL Teams is extremely tough. And, and rising to the top of that, so much so that you're so respected by all these other guys who've outperformed, you know, 99.9% of the world. What is it about him? What, how did, what did he have and how did he get it that he was, that, that he was so respected and so influential on so many top, top tier guys?
The Johnny Koenig you're, you're speaking of?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, he was, he was a commander. He, he went on 60 Minutes once. And they wanted to ask him why so many people were getting second chances to go through BUDs. If they raised their hand and they quit one day, why were they allowed to go back? And it was a lull in the teams. We really hated what was going on. Big Navy was trying to have the SEAL Teams get more people in them. And by having us do that, they wanted us to lower the standards at BUDs and we were dead against it. So his commanding officer said, Johnny, I'd like you to talk with this Leslie Stahl. She's here with 60 Minutes. She wants to talk to you about, you know, the new requirements for BUDs. He said, no, no, she doesn't want to hear from me. She doesn't want to hear from me. So finally he did go. And he said, and I won't say the words, what he said, but he said, basically any blank can make it through BUDs now. If you get a little tired, you raise your hand and you get, you know, you get a day off and you come back the next day. But he, I think to answer your question, he, he, he spoke from the heart. And he was total conviction in what he said and what he believed to be right. And things were right or wrong. There was no, none of this gray stuff in the middle. And everybody knew that if you're gonna go to war, you wanted to go with him because he was fearless and he knew what was right and he knew, you know, in, in this, in this, uh, example I'm setting, saying now, he knew what was right and wrong and he went after what was right.
And it sounds like that, that's.
Anything for.
That sincerity and character is, uh, it's unachievable by most, but, uh, we're gonna go to a break and then we're gonna talk. I have one extremely important question to ask you about, uh, that I hope will, will improve, uh, activists. So when we get back, we'll talk about that.
All right, folks, this is Gun Owners Radio FM 96.1 AM 1170.
The Answer.
They are our cuddlers and coworkers, per machines and love bugs and constant companions.
First question is, how do I find the questions?
We have, um, so there's some, the guys are talking about a thousand yard range. I don't know if you know of any secret places they can go that might be closer to home.
Thousand yard range, the only thousand yard, thousand yard range I know about, there's one in Imperial County that I don't really know many details about. And then Paula, I believe has a thousand yard range.
I don't think it's thousand. I thought it was.
Am I wrong?
Uh, I don't, I don't know for sure, but I thought it was more like six or 700, I thought, but I could be wrong there too.
Thousand yards. I don't think people understand how long a thousand yards is.
Well, there were, there was out in Alpine, but that one's no longer an option.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. A thousand yards, it's pretty hard to find a thousand yards anywhere, let alone San Diego. So I, yeah, I think you're right. Paula, it was something like six, seven or something like that.
It's definitely further than most, but I don't know that, I, I'm not sure that it's quite a thousand.
Uh, there's some private ranges, but I can't really talk about those, but I don't know any public ranges where you can step on and do a thousand yards and.
What about in the desert?
Yeah. I mean, there's BLM land out in Imperial County.
If you know where to go.
You've got an automatic measure out of a thousand yards.
Yeah. I mean, that's.
Be pooped.
Yeah. I mean, a thousand yards is.
You and I can't walk a thousand yards.
I don't want to.
I don't either.
I'd drive it.
I would too.
Yeah. Like a little three foot tape measure. Just stop, wait a minute.
With a little rock there. There's another little rock.
There you go.
Got any more questions?
That would take about four days.
I know.
Some people are asking about, um, anything new on the gun show front. I know Rich, um, answered that, some potential dates, but there's people asking.
What do they ask?
I just said, there's anything new on gun shows in the future.
Rich answered that.
He did.
Um, really, uh, Schwartz, something new for gun show. Okay. You just answered that. All right. All right. Well, I'm looking forward to interviewing Sasha.
Me too.
It's gonna be fascinating.
You know why she's here? Owners Radio FM 96.1 AM 1170.
The Answer.
Hey Riverside, San Bernardino, gun grabbers are getting more and more desperate. Let's face it, all these laws disarm only the people that would use a gun to defend themselves. Fight back and do something to defend your second amendment right. Join Inland Empire Gun Owners right now. We're growing the two A community and are getting more pro two A officials elected. Membership is only $10 a month. So it's real easy. You can't even buy breakfast for $10. So just go to iegunowners.com/join.
Okay. We're talking to Don Mann, former SEAL and, uh, now motivational speaker. He's also a New York Times bestselling author and world-class adventure, uh, competitor. Uh, Don, here's my question. Um, we, there's a, I, I, you know, our main purpose at San Diego County Gun Owners, and of course Gun Owners Radio, is to have a direct effect and impact on public policy. True activism, you know, we don't want to just wait around for an attorney to file a lawsuit, although that's important and we're involved in many lawsuits. We want to be the ounce of prevention, um, rather than the, you know, 150 pounds of cure it takes in the political world. And, but it's tough here in San Diego to keep a, a positive mental attitude. And I, I would say that, uh, one of the, you know, i- if someone asked me, what is the biggest threat to the rights of gun owners? Um, they'd probably expect me to say Democrats or the left or anti-gunners or the Brady Organization, whatever. That's not it. Uh, the biggest threat to our gun rights is apathy. It's apathy. I, I, you know, and there are a lot of quotes about that, you know, uh, one about, uh, you know, the only way for, you know, evil to prevail is for good men to do nothing. That's about apathy. Um, and that's truly, I've talked about it many times, the American experiment, what we truly are is the, the nation of the self-governed. But, uh, that's not a spectator sport. You, you, you have to govern yourself. You have to be involved. You have to make sure that the right people are elected leaders. So there's no place for apathy in the American experiment. As a motivational speaker, as someone that's accomplished so much, Don, wha- you know, wh- what's, what are your thoughts on educating and encouraging people? So that we get past the apathy and people take action?
Well, you know, um, I am involved in a couple of TV shows. And, um, they're, they're gun-based, basically. It's called Surviving Man, my last name and Surviving Man All Stars. But what, what we do is we get, um, gun weapons dealers, manufacturers, ammo folks come over. People very, very, uh, um, uh, educated on gun rights. And, and what we're trying to do is counter the left by having a right-minded based TV program. And, and everybody we have on that show, Ted Nugent should be our next host, I hope, my co-host. But, uh, everybody we have on that show is pro, pro-gun. But the other thing about them is they're pro-Americans. They're really, really good people. And all they want to do is defend their family and defend their friends. And to be able to have, you know, have, to have self-defense if, if the time comes up. I mean, the, the country's only getting worse and worse every day and, and I don't trust the government at all. And, and now they want to take our guns away more so than ever before. I don't get it. What, what, what I would like to share is a story. My stepson, I grew up with him. He grew up with me. We, he was, um, four years old when he came into my life. But anyways, he grew up, went to college and, uh, just right before he graduated, he, um, he was shot by some thugs. And, um, they shot him. They stole his car. They pulled him out of his car. And they shot at him six times, three rounds missed. The other two hit him, one in the arm, one in the thigh and one in his ribs. And he was saying, don't shoot, don't shoot, don't shoot. And I went and interviewed all the people who, who saw this. And then the thug went back to his car, reloaded his revolver and shot my stepson in the head and killed him.
Jeez.
So if these guys got away with it for a while, um, they, they got away with it. These two drug dealers, they stole his car. You know, they made $250 or whatever it was. And then my stepson is laying on the street dying. Now, if my stepson had a weapon to defend himself, he could have easily, easily defended himself and he'd be alive today. Um, so that, that's one thing. And, and, you know, I'm not a, I'm not a gun, like some people say, you're a gun fanatic. I, I'm not, I'm not a gun fanatic. But I do believe we have to defend ourselves. We have to defend our families. And, and I think to answer your question, I think it's a lot of it that apathy, I couldn't agree with you more. I think what we need to do is just educate. I told my little daughter, I told her Jeff Cooper's four base, you know, I went to his course back in 1982. I, I taught her gun safety and she doesn't have a weapon, but whenever she's around my house and I have weapons out, I, I always ask her, what are the four safety rules? And then I tell her, you know, if nobody, if, if of these accidents, every time you see one of these accidents happen, it's because they broke a safety rule. If everybody knew those four basic safety rules like you do, there wouldn't be all these accidents. So I, I think the education is not there and I think that's, uh, that's a big, big step. And of course the left, you know, they, uh, they taint the evidence, they taint the facts and they, they, they lie all the time and they make it worse by doing that. But I think if we could balance that out with just education and testimonials from people where, you know, these weapons have saved lives and the, and, and the accidents, you know, they're, there, there are accidents, but a lot of those is because they're not educated and they don't know the, those four safety, basic safety rules. It's my opinion.
Well, it's, you know, in, in San Diego, especially in California, in San Diego, we've had 35, 40 years of, of, of bad gun laws, uh, which is over a generation. And, um, that has effectively helped change a culture. And, and that it's, it's, if you are into firearms in San Diego, it's, it's unusual. Whereas in most of the rest of the country, if you haven't had any firearm experience, that's on you. That's weird. Um, so we're, we're fighting back against that culture. We're trying to influence hearts and minds. And, you know, someone from your, either your motivational background, your motivational speaker background, or even your military background, you know, how do you win hearts and minds? You know, when you, we're, we're, we're in occupied territory, you know? And, uh, we're, I gotta tell you, I, it's, it's probably not hyperbole to say that many San Diegans who've been here the last 30, 40 years have been, uh, brainwashed or at least influenced heavily by public policy into thinking that guns are not a good thing. So what's your advice for, uh, you know, changing hearts and minds?
Well, you know, I spoke with the owner, it's called W O F T. Uh, most people believe that's World of Firearms Training. Uh, he, he has another thing for, what it stands for is family training, weapons of family training, but it's. He, he has another thing for what it stands for is family training, weapons of family training, but it's W O F T in Tampa. And I went and met this gentleman and he has an absolutely beautiful range. It looks like Delta Force's range. It's a state of the art range. And he has people like Shaquille O'Neal fly in and, and people like that to come train at his range. But you know what he does? He, he looked at the approach from the top, the legislative approach, like how can we have these legislators come to a range like this? And see what we do, see how we train our family members. First of all, we want to de-escalate. We want to de-escalate. It's not about just shooting the bad guy. It's de-escalate. How can we de-escalate with maybe, uh, other sources other than a weapon, although always being armed? And, and he has a whole training-based curriculum in Tampa, Florida called W O F T. And he's got the beautiful ranges, the, the shoot house and all that. But what he likes to do is take people and teach them the basics first, how to de-escalate, how to train people from the top, the legislative, personnel on down. And that's his approach. And he seems to be making headway and he's inviting these big personalities to come through. Because of course we know they have big voices, the, uh, the Hollywood type. That's his, that's his answer to it. And I really, really respect and appreciate his approach to it. But I do think we have to get out there and what you're doing on your show and people like you. I mean, that, that's, that's makes a difference. And I think if it wasn't for folks like you, we would be in really big trouble. Because there's not much of a voice out there, except for nice, great shows like this here to get the message across. So I, I really think it comes down from, it just comes down to legislation, voting in the right people and educating them too. Because like in San Diego, thirty, two, 30 years of bad information.
Yeah.
That's, that's hard to turn that ship around.
It is. We're doing a good job though. Well, Don, I can't tell you how much I appreciate you. I always, always a pleasure talking to you. Um, you always have a great, interesting perspective. If people want to know more about you or see more about what you're doing, do you have a website or where should people go?
It's, um, US Frogman with two N's dot com. And that's my website, but, uh, it's always a pleasure to be on your show and I appreciate you having me.
You bet. Thanks, Don. Appreciate you, man. Take care.
Thanks, Don.
Thank you.
All right, bud. I wonder what, uh, I wonder what gun Shaquille O'Neal shoots.
Derringer.
I can't, I can't say, as soon as you said that, I was like, huh, I wonder what he's shooting. He's got enormous hands. Like I have a hard time shooting like a Glock. Like I wonder what Shaquille O'Neal's shooting. Google that. What does Shaquille O'Neal, yeah, really. That's pretty funny. US Frogman with two N's, cause his name's Don Mann, M A N N.
Pretty clever, huh?
I know, that's hilarious.
That'd be a marketing guy.
What a great guy. We, we've had, uh, a bunch of, uh, SEALs on our show lately and we're about to have a bunch more, but man, they're all so interesting. You know?
Yeah.
So anyway, um, okay. So we're going to, uh, uh, next segment, we're going to talk to Sasha, which I can't wait. She has a big shirt. So she's affiliated with Turning Point. You guys have a big event, but I also want to talk to you about you.
Is that Turning Point USA?
That's the one. That's the very one. But she's got an interesting, very interesting story as well.
Oh, yeah.
So after the, after the break here, we're gonna, we're gonna launch right in and talk to Sasha. She's been sitting here watching us struggle through a show here.
For a whole hour.
We just, it's like our first show. I swear it's not usually this bumpy. So.
Hey, it's always fun to be here.
Well, good.
See, there you go.
I already like her positive.
She can be a politician. All right. Hey folks, this is Gun Owners Radio, FM 96.1, AM 1170.
The Answer.
Six hours of radio and I just bought another hour. So I'm going to be doing seven hours of radio.
What are you doing in that seventh hour?
Uh, I picked, uh, I'm going to do rad with, what's her name? That girl that came in with the, it goes out and finds women. I'm gonna do a show with that. Then I'm gonna do another show.
Hey Brennan.
With a kid, he's, it's called Growing Up Garage. He's 10 years old. And he races at Barona Speedway, little guy with glasses, little black horn rimmed glasses. And he teaches you how to change a flat tire and how to put spark plugs in.
That's amazing. I can learn from that.
And the whole show is going to be based on kids. I'm going to host it, open and close it, but then the kids are going to take over the show.
You know, I had, I don't know if I remember telling you this, but I had, uh, when I was working at the bank, there was this teller there. She's working her way through college. She had a flat tire. And all day she's working, but she had this flat tire. She's so bummed. She doesn't know what she's going to do, blah, 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 blah. And she's begging me all day. She's, you gotta, you gotta help me. You gotta change my flat tire for you. So I'm not going to change it. I'm not going to change that flat tire for you. And she is livid, you know? Didn't have AAA, you know, didn't really have any resources. And I'm like, I'm not changing that tire for you. And at the end of the day, we went out there and I said, I will walk you through it, but I'm not going to change it for you. And I walked her through it and she changed her tire.
And the happiest kid in town.
You would have thought she cured cancer.
You know, that, that's very similar to how I learned how to change tires.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Somebody for, who forced you?
Uh, well, I was seven months pregnant in college and I got a flat and I went to campus police to see if they could help me and liability. They're not allowed to touch your car, just so you know, in case you get, yeah, they can't. So two grown men watched me seven months pregnant, laying on the ground, figuring out how to change my own tire and they just talked me through it. I can do it now. I don't need help. But, yeah.
I mean, she was like, she was ready to launch her own automotive show.
Some people will call you a bit of a jerk for it, but I think actually, I think I learned better by.
Doing it yourself.
Yeah. Well, and, and being made to do it. And I, you know, I didn't have an, I didn't have someone to fall back on to, to help me, you know, do it for me. So I had to figure it out.
Well, I was being a jerk, but it's fun. In my defense, it's fun to be a jerk.
I preach, you know, on my automotive show, you know, that there's no guy should be calling AAA that has a flat tire. No guy should, well, check this out.
I've, I got AAA for a reason. Those big ass tires on my stupid Jeep, I am calling them.
So I'm driving down a freeway in a brand new Lexus, LX force five seventy, big thing.
Right.
And all of a sudden this light comes on the dash, right, left front tire, flat. There's no air. Shit. So I just got it up to 80, you know, and it kept the wheel off the ground. Then when I finally got to take the exit to go change it. Whoa, 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 whoa. So I said, well, shit, I was going to call AAA. And then I went, oh shit, I can't call AAA. All they gotta do is drive by and see me standing there with a AAA truck. So I had to change.
I got no pride. I'd do it.
Yeah. Brian has his, uh, cars, which has his face on it.
Oh, yeah.
And he's like, the last thing I want to do is see any of my cars breaking down on the side. Cause then that ruins my.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. I flagged an old guy down once on the freeway. We're coming down the five from LA and I flagged this old dude down. I looked over and his tire was flat. And, uh, my wife at the time, I said, hey, uh, uh, ask him to pull over and we'll change his tire. And, you know, she was talking to him and she was like, we'll change your tire. And he's just like, really? You know, and he was kind of disabled or we went, you know, changed his tire.
You made Laura change his tire?
I made, I got Laura out and made her change. No, I changed the tire.
Tell that truth.
This guy was so happy. No, no, no. This guy, he was so happy and he was with his, uh, he called, he like described her as his, uh, his special lady friend. He's like, yeah, I'm here with my special lady friend and I can't change the tire or whatever. We're going somewhere. So, and his trunk was full. I had to completely unload his trunk to get to the spare.
Most people can't even find it.
And then he, uh, but he sent me, uh, I got mail from that dude. I gave him my business. He was like, here, I want to give you money. I was like, I don't want any money. And I gave him my business card. I was working at the bank at the time.
And he says, oh, you got all the money.
I got, I got, dude, I got mailed for, I got mailed from that guy for at least a year. He might still be sending me mail there. And that was like 15 years ago.
Not to change the subject. So you know, have you met Charlie Kirk?
Of course.
What a great guy. Isn't that guy great?
What else? We're going to interview her about all that.
I know, but I never get to talk.
Oh, you can, you can, you can, that's your question.
All right. Or my question is, are you afraid of the protesters coming by?
Guys, we're interviewing her in 48 seconds.
Mention about the whole protest.
See.
This is the entire interview.
Bow your head and leave.
So by the way, real quick, I did look up SHAC and guns. So I, I had no clue. I don't follow SHAC. But apparently he has, he owns a few and there's a picture of him clearly. Well, first of all, I'd like to offer him free training. Horrible, but he actually is, is a big sponsor of a lot of gun buyback programs.
I don't know what you feel about that.
I know. I'm a little, I know.
So what?
Yeah.
You know what? Let's talk about gun buyback. Welcome to Gun Owners Radio. We are your second amendment community. Interviews, product reviews, politics, trivia. Gun Owners Radio has it all and more. Check us out at gunownersradio.com and tune in every week to hear Dave Stahl, Michael Schwartz, and all our guests talk about everything second amendment. Here we go.
All right, folks. Hey, welcome back. This is the second hour of the most amazing radio show you've ever listened to. Gun Owners Radio.
I didn't mean to start laughing.
FM 96.1, AM 1170.
The Answer.
All right. Hey folks, if you're a gun owner, if you ever need to use your gun to protect yourself or your loved ones, you need legal protection. Even if you do everything right, even if you're a hundred percent justified, you should be prepared for the legal battles after your self-defense battle. That's why you need firearm legal protection. When you join, you get uncapped legal protection for self-defense, for civil or criminal cases with a 24/7 hotline. Joining is real easy. Just go to the fire, to firearmslegal.com and click on becoming a member. Use code G O R for a discount. Enjoy the peace of mind knowing that you are protected. If you are ever involved in a self-defense incident, firearmlegal.com and use that discount code G O R.
There you go. Okay. This week's winner, subscribe and win. Uh, we're going to, if you sign up for our email list, you could win some cool swag. And this week's winner is Leo De La Cruz. Congratulations, Leo. All you gotta do is send an email to prizes@gunownersradio.com and everybody else go to gunownersradio.com, sign up for our list. Big special thank you to Discount Gun Mart for their awesome anniversary sale. Uh, JB and your entire crew, you guys did fantastic yesterday. A lot of people came. Uh, we sold a bunch of tickets for our raffle. For, uh, not me, by the way, this week, our monthly meetings, um, let's see. Tuesday is North County Shooting Center. Wednesday is, uh, Discount Gun Mart on Marina. And then Thursday is Lobella's Pizza. We're actually going to pull the winner for the 10 ARs. We're going to pull 10 winners for the 10 ARs.
What time, what time are these three meetings?
Six o'clock. They all start at six. Go to san diego countygunowners.com or stcgo.org for more information and show up at the meeting and you can buy a ticket. You might be one of those 10 AR winners.
Cool.
How about that? Okay. Uh, without further ado, I'm going to talk to Sasha. Sasha, how are you?
I'm good. How are you guys?
Fantastic. Now you're here for a number of different reasons. You're here as a, uh, local volunteer and represent, are you volunteer?
I am a lectured official.
Lectured official. Okay. For, for Turning Point.
I'm a lectured official for Lakeside Community Planning Group.
I didn't know that.
Yeah.
You got all kinds of stuff on your resume.
She's 20. What do you expect?
So, okay. Lakeside, uh, uh, community planning. Fantastic.
Turning Point USA.
What do you do for Turning Point USA?
So I'm, uh, president of San Diego Activism Hub and then I am vice president for Turning Point at San Diego State University.
That's, that's fascinating. And, uh, but with the, one of the other reasons I want you to, I want, I wanted you to come and talk today is where are you originally from?
Ukraine.
Ukraine. And how long have you been in, in the United States?
So it's going to be six years, uh, in June.
She's like no accent, right?
I was going to ask her where the accent come from. I thought it was Chula Vista.
Schwarzenegger has been here like 60 years. That dude's still.
He, he makes money on that.
Barely understand what that guy says. She speaks perfectly.
Says nee bah instead of nee burr in the commercials. Come on.
I know. It's an, it annoys me.
So what brought you over?
Well, I would say American dream. My parents have been talking about it a lot. And America has a lot of different kind of opportunities and I guess we just had to go and catch it here.
And you landed in San Diego for?
Well, San Diego is the finest city in America.
My goodness, this girl's a politician.
Well, okay. So Ukraine, I, I think a lot of people, like we, all we've seen of, of Ukraine are like these war torn videos because of the horrible war that's going on. How can, can you describe, like, what was it like when you were a kid growing up in, in Ukraine? Was, I mean, you know what I mean? Like what was the, what was the environment?
Well, the environment was definitely completely different compared to here. Cause here, uh, like I would say honestly, the roads, it takes you half an hour by car to get to La Jolla or any other places. I'm from Oklahoma. And I used to see my friends every single day after school. But here it's not even common to go hang out after school. I don't know, in the yard or like at the park. People now used to like play in social media and all that kind of stuff. But, uh, environment is, it feels like home there. It feels more connected, but here people are more genuine, I would say.
Oh, that's interesting. People are more genuine here.
How have you been accepted? Cause you know, I mean, I know we're kind of a melting pot of people in the United States prior to the border being open and all of that. I mean, we always seem to bring in all kinds of people that like to come for, like you said, the American dream. Have you found being in San Diego welcoming?
Well, San Diego definitely welcomed me, but there were a couple of cases, especially after the war, since Ukrainian war started, then they're like, oh, so why are you here? When did you move? The most common question and when people meet me, where are you from? And when I say Ukraine, they're like, either saying to me, oh, okay. And then the other part is like, is your family okay? Are like, is there somebody there like from your family, all that kind of stuff? So.
Which is, but that's thoughtful. That's thoughtful.
It's thoughtful, but you know, like every day, it got to the point where like I have a robotic, uh, like response.
You just hand them, hand them a flyer.
At this point, you know, like the, like the tap phone, like you can tap and then tell people like, this is the whole biography about me.
You should just tell them you're from someplace else, like Lucetania or someplace.
No, the, the interesting fact, nobody knew what Ukraine is until the war started.
Well, I, I agree. I bet you if you went.
Well, I did.
Oh, you did not. I bet you if you go out and get 10 people and a map with no names on the map and say, point out Ukraine, they couldn't do it.
They couldn't do it. They would say, like, start pointing out like Russia because they know that it's like near Russia, but they, some people say, oh, is it a part of Russia? Like back in like 2018, I was like in high school. I went to high, Grand Hills. And, uh, I had a lot of people asking me, where is Ukraine? Cause they don't even know.
Right.
So.
It's by Romania.
Yeah. Right down the street.
People are like, where's Romania? You sure our border with Romania, right?
Yeah.
See that?
But you had to ask.
She kind of paused and I'm like, did I just screw up? So, all right.
By the way, that's the way to get to him. So just, just give it that look. Oh, then he'll freak out.
What kind of connection do you still have with Ukraine? You know what I mean? Is it, is it like, that's home? I miss it, you know?
It's her family over there.
Or is it like, uh, it's, that's in my hindsight. I'm, I'm, I'm here now.
Yeah. I have like half of my family there. My mom, my sister and my grandparents. But, um, the only connection that I still have it is just people, not the place. Because.
That's interesting. So talk about that. What's the difference between having a connection with the people and the place?
So when I used to live there, I really did not see any kind of future for myself.
Wow.
Because I was, I would say I was like a lost kid who was just going in like school and honestly failing all the classes possible. I didn't really care at school because they're like, I would say the environment where I was, it was not as welcoming for myself. And for me, I would say it's like, kind of, you're in school being either bullied or you're a bully. So I've been bullied a lot and I just didn't feel like. Yeah. And I didn't feel like, oh my God, I like, I belong there.
Did it feel like, I've talked to other people from, you know, uh, similar countries and, and it, did it feel like your path was just kind of decided for you and there wasn't really, like there wasn't, you didn't have much control over your future? Is that, is that something you felt or no?
When I moved here?
No, in Ukraine, back in Ukraine.
Which caused you to pack up and move out.
Well, my parents have been talking a lot about it and I just felt like, well, I think there is more opportunities here than there. Like even looking at now, like there were, there is a war and I don't think there are open jobs right now that I can apply to as like a future graduate of a university.
Right. But when you say your parents had, had this in their mind, was it, were they thinking about this for themselves or for you or for the whole family?
The whole family because the influence for the future, because as I said, like America is full of opportunities. You can become whoever you want, do whatever you want. And nobody will deny you with that. But.
And look where she's come from. I mean, I mean, she's actually getting into politics.
I know. It's awesome. I didn't know about the elected part. That's very interesting.
That's even better. Maybe this could be, maybe we'll extend the show and tell Bob Siegel to just take.
Well, I, I, that's why I say, I mean, this is just, we got the next two segments.
Who's the producer? We could have done this for a whole hour.
Well, let's go to a commercial break. So we can come back and talk to her.
All right. Let's do that. This is Gun Owners Radio, FM 96.1, AM 1170.
The Answer.
We all know that aches and pains come with simply getting older, but it doesn't mean you have to accept it. That's why.
Indoor barbecue and then they'd have an observation table where you would sit and get drunk.
What's, what's it called now? What's, what's it called now?
Coaster Sloan.
It's still called Coaster Sloan?
Yeah.
Do they have hats with that on it? No, I'm just kidding.
Well, the problem with this, with this was, this was my kind of place. I mean, every, you knew everybody, kinda like Cheers. You knew everybody, everybody had fun and it was just a blast. His wife and him got divorced. He lost the restaurant. Somebody went in and kinda turned it into a Denny's. It looks like a Denny's.
A Denny's?
Well, it looks like.
Trying to think where it is. I mean, I know where it is, but I'm trying to think which specific one. I, that's, those are my stomping grounds. There used to be like a, a Middle Eastern barbecue place there that was super good.
No, this isn't barbecue.
No, 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 I know this isn't, but I know exactly where it's in that same area.
You know where Hamels is?
Yeah.
Come this way, come east from Hamels, and then there's a liquor store on the corner.
Yeah.
It's right next door to the liquor store. It's called a Coaster Sloan.
Okay.
And it's a two-story. You can go up.
There was this, uh, this barbecue place. So it was like, it was like, it was, it was a Middle Eastern family. So it had a little bit of Middle Eastern flair, but it was really like a Texas barbecue place. And do you like, do you like barbecue?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So they would take barbecue brisket and mix it with coleslaw and baked beans and they'd put it in a tortilla.
What?
Pretty much like burrito.
Oh, yeah. It was so delicious. You know how when you're at like a picnic and you get that last little bit like on your plate, everything's kinda mushed together and you get that one flavor of everything? That was the whole burrito.
Did you have an interview with Kimberly?
Kimberly? Yeah, yeah, it went well. Yeah, and they asked me. Yeah, at the end of this interview, so it was this, it was a very serious interview about our legislation and lawsuits and everything. Uh, I forget the name of the TNT or whatever. And we talked and we're like, yeah, we have to do this and the second amendment, we're all in trouble. And oh my God, the sky's falling. And at the end of it, he goes, now what's with Denny's spaghetti? I'm like, what?
All right, folks, welcome back. You're listening to Gun Owners Radio FM ninety six one, AM eleven seventy.
The answer.
Uh, folks, Not Me is for women, and you gotta hear this, Sasha, for women, by women, and is designed to help women with training, purchasing a gun, getting a concealed carry permit. And guess what? It's all free. All you have to do, you just give, uh, these folks a call or just go to notmeSD.org, notmeSD.org, sign up and they will take care of you. What have we put a couple thousand women through so far?
Over fourteen hundred since twenty nineteen when we started it.
And it's all women. There's no guys involved and seventy percent of them come back as an ambassador. So I have to tell you a really cute, quick story. So I met Janet's, or not Janet's, it's a tavern. Yep. And I met a lady that was just sitting next to me and my wife.
Yep.
So of course, you know me, I start pitching Not Me.
Sure.
All of a sudden, an ambassador comes over and says, who are you? I told her I was, oh, yeah. So I said, well, hell, you're here. I'll, I'm leaving. So I left and left her with pitching the lady on Not Me.
Yeah, it's a very, it's, it's.
It's phenomenal.
I'm enormously impressed. So we're talking with Sasha, we're talking about the Ukraine, growing up in, in the Ukraine. Um, what, what did your parents do in Ukraine?
Yeah. So I lived with my mother for a while. And my mom works as, say, I don't know how the job calls an English accountant.
An accountant?
Yeah, pretty much. Yeah. And my dad.
Bookkeeping.
Pretty much. Yeah. And, uh, my dad used to work, uh, online in marketing. So.
Online marketing. How hard is it to get from, you know, you left, what, seven years ago, you said?
Six.
Six years ago. So that was right after, there was like a big coup. It was right after.
Two thousand fourteen.
That was right after the big, see, I know what I'm talking about, Dave.
I'm impressed.
Two thousand fourteen, big coup, big controversy behind it. I mean.
Annexation of Crimea.
Yeah. I mean, there's very rarely a coup that isn't, you know, controversial. They're all controversial, but, um, there's a lot of talk of, of that coup basically destabilizing Ukraine, frankly, is probably the best way to put it. And we're not sure just how, how, I mean, it was a coup, you know, coups are, you know, coups are, they're not democratic. They're not, you know, it's, it's might over, over right, you know, or might equals right. So was leaving Ukraine, first off, was, was life very different after the coup than before the coup? And if so, how so?
I was not really impacted because Crimea is kind of far from me, but at the same time, like there were people, around people impacted.
Did you speak English when you came here?
I could understand, but I couldn't respond. So it was.
And look how good she is. Look at Arnold.
In six years.
And Arnold can't even.
So, but what, what was like a noticeable difference? I mean, this was a major world event, this coup. What was like a noticeable difference between, between the coup before and, and after the coup?
Well, the whole presidency thing that happened and the president fled to Russia with a bunch of money, all of that kind. He just escaped pretty much. And after that, it was just the whole like Maidan story, like the burning like fire, like at the, like the most like famous place in Ukraine in the downtown, I would say, it counted downtown. And like as, as a child, I don't remember any of that specifically. Like I know some of like, you know, historical moments, but I was not really affected. I was how, how old I was? I was probably like twelve, eleven, ten.
So you weren't really all that aware of what was going on. But did you think that that with everything with Crimea, do you think there's a river? Is there a river?
Yeah.
In Crimea? Crimea River?
Nepro.
So is there, uh?
Did you hear that?
The, um, the, uh, I think that's a song, Crimea River.
Did you hear that?
I did.
The, uh, was that a major factor as far as your parents deciding to leave?
Well, my parents prior to that, so my parents are separated. Like they're divorced and my dad is married and I have two siblings and like I'm, I'm here with them.
Gotcha.
And, uh, so my dad, my dad used to live in Georgia Republic while I was living in Ukraine.
Oh, wow.
So that was a little bit different, but at the same time, my dad has always dreamt of moving to America because that's one of the places where like you should grow children to be more educated. But now you can look what's happening at the different board meetings, you know?
So what, how did you get, well, first off, what, what was your, what's your impression of America? Like, you, you know, you've been here six, seven years. Um, what is something that really surprised you about living in America? Or, or you know what I mean? Something that's really like, oh my gosh, I can't believe things are this way. Or I can't believe you have this or access to that or whatever.
People are smiling. One of the things.
Really?
Like if you go to like Slavic countries, it's a resting face. It's like, nobody can't feel your emotions. While they're like, like here, it's like completely different and people are so much nicer.
People are nicer in America.
But they won't change your flat tire.
I did.
No, you didn't.
That's amazing. Um, that's pretty phenomenal. Is there anything that you dislike? Is there anything where you think, you know what, it's actually a little bit better back in, uh, Ukraine?
I don't know if something comes up. Uh, family traditions? Here's like, I'm, I miss just, you know, like family surrounding, like big table. Cause here like, we're like pretty much on like a different continent. And, uh, like I don't really have any family here besides my parents and my siblings.
What about, say, like, you know, when I was a kid, I was fourteen, I moved from Florida to Hawaii and seeing the, uh, heritage, the diversity of heritage, you know, there were kids from, you know, every country and, you know, in, in, in Florida, I grew up, you were either white or black, you know? Um, that was pretty much it. And then I get to Hawaii, there are people from the Philippines and Japan and Thailand and all over, you know, Polynesian. When you came to California, was it a similar experience? Did you notice like, oh my gosh, there's all this, you know, diverse heritage or?
Yeah. So the first time I actually felt it, it was in my ESL class. It's English as a Second Language class. And there were a lot of different people with different nationalities and we were all trying to learn English here. So that was like a big change in my life. Cause I was like in high school, I was put into high school right after I moved. So I came here in June and I went to high school for my tenth grade in August. So at that point I was like trying to learn English, some words, trying to like hear other people speak and like learn from them. But then when I went to like Granite Hills High School, after that, my life was completely different because I was treated at the same level as the whole high schoolers who were speaking English for their whole life. So at that time I was like, I have to catch up and learn English and be on the same level. So it took me, I think, two to three months to get adapted like in classrooms and, uh, learn in the same way as they are.
What, what got you into politics?
Excellent question. That's.
Cause I would think that you would have just came here being happy you're here and learned to adjust, have friends, go to the mall. But you got into politics.
Ooh, well, so back in twenty twenty, my school got really, really political. We have been watching like CNN ten, uh, with Carlos shows. Those were pretty fun to watch because he was like entertaining and at the same time I got to learn a little more about politics. But then it was also elections. And that's when like it was COVID time, everybody was at home. And then at the same time, school was online and in my government class, we started being very divisive. And that's when I was like, okay, I'm interested in politics and I like arguing. I like debating people. I like, you know, uh, persuading people in my own opinion and listening to theirs at the same time and see what's the difference. I like analyzing people, especially when they're giving me their opinion. And I can share my own story because as an immigrant, I have much more different opinion, especially when it comes to countries, there were like USSR. And people are like, yeah, we need to bring USSR back, but really, I don't think you want that. I think you should enjoy like America and capitalism and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, that's amazing. Do you ever watch Fox?
Not anymore. I, I'm sticking, uh, so I like, I scroll a lot on social media. It was like political stuff. Cause like, that's when like I get like, I would say from primary sources now, news. But I love K U S I. I like our local news because that's where I would say it's still sticks to the true self. And we get news like directly, especially about local. But when it comes to international, I like listening to different, um, sides, like I listen to Russian news.
Both sides.
Yeah. I listen to Russian news. I listen to Ukrainian news. I try to listen to Al-Zakira news and, uh, like also sometimes I can look at Fox, CNN. But those are like very, you know, at this point, uh, I would say controlled media.
Yeah. So the, the, the most recent war, it's been about a year now, right? In Ukraine?
Two.
Has it been two years? Yeah. So it's been a couple of years now. Um, what, what is your opinion? Is, is one side all right? Is the other side all wrong? Or is there a little bit of blame to go around? Or what, what's your take?
Well, let me say this, I am for civilians, not for the government.
That's, okay. So that's a very interesting take. So talk a little bit more about that. Like what is that?
Well, one of the things I believe in is government there is very corrupt and especially.
Ukrainian government?
Yes.
And the Russian government.
Both. Both sides are very corrupt. And at this point, I really don't see like the future in changes. I think it will, it will become more corrupt, more controlled. Even if you look at it right now, they're drafting men to the war, to the front lines and they're not even letting them out of the country because martial law is intact. And I would say honestly, this whole thing is, uh, I would say a kind of a drama show at the same time, but at the same time, people are dying and civilians who are not even partaking in political power game. Uh, just there, present and they're being used for that kind of stuff.
Well, and they're pushed into war against their, their, their beliefs or their feelings. They don't wanna go to war.
No, and a lot of people.
Could you go to war and fight and put your life on the line when you don't even wanna be there?
Yeah. And I mean, a lot of people since the war started moved out. I think over, I, two, I don't remember the exact number. A lot of like millions of people just fled to America, to Europe, to like Australia, all the different places because.
Poland, Romania.
Poland is now, if you go talk to Poland people, Polish people, they would say that they're just even tired of, uh, Ukrainian people flitting, flitting to their country.
They would do the same thing if they were.
And I mean, we are with our border. Like we can talk about that after, but our own border is, uh, a whole drama struggle. And guess what? We're, we're open border and nobody cares.
Nobody cares.
And that's very sad.
We have to have her back on.
Well, we're gonna have her. We're gonna talk to her in the next segment. Two.
Okay. Well, let's take a quick break. This is Gun Owners Radio FM ninety six one, AM eleven seventy.
The answer.
Are you ready to embark on an unforgettable expedition to Alaska this summer? Then join me, Dr. Sebastian Gorka, along with Mike Gallagher.
Okay, that just goes to show you.
I mean, I was like, for me, news media is very corrupt when like, especially with the whole COVID stuff happened.
Yeah.
Uh, when they started like attacking people, like I really would say that with COVID, all of us were freaking out at the beginning and then.
Cause we didn't know.
Yeah, we didn't know. And then in period of like when everything started closing down, they even closed beaches. That was the most crazy part. I, my family loves surfing and we go surfing like every other week.
Makes sense. You're from Ukraine.
I mean, honestly, I was so surprised. Americans have beaches and they are not surfing. They're not even going to swim and like, what, what's the point, you know, to live here?
Well, let me ask you a question. How clean is your ocean in Ukraine?
They barely. We don't have ocean.
They don't have an ocean.
How do you surf?
They don't. I was joking. So you learned how to surf when you came over?
Yeah. It's literally the second day after I, I got here, I went surfing.
You got a board and where you went, huh?
My, my parents were here before me.
Oh, okay.
They, they came here actually, wh- which, which is funny. They came here, uh, exact, uh, day of annexation of Crimea. But they were in diff- like different, uh, like country at that time. So they didn't flee, but it was just interesting like how it's like the.
The timing.
Wow. So the.
Don't ask questions.
The, uh, no, yeah, you're right. But it is funny about that. Like they were like, hey, you can't go to a pool. I'm like, wait, you, you can't go to a large.
Well, you could protest.
Yeah, well, yeah, you could protest.
You go to a pot, you go to a pot store.
Huge, uh, you know, pool of, of bleach. Like it doesn't just get any more, you know, sanitary than that. I mean, what, like really? Like you're gonna get COVID in a pool?
Well, that's because nobody knew and it's all control.
And the way they controlled our minds. I remember I was freaking out because I was like, what is this happening? And then after six months, we realized we all opened our eyes on this and we were like, wait, isn't this a control like of like the whole citizens? And it's just, it impacts a lot.
I, I, I actually laughed.
All right, folks, welcome back. You're listening to Gun Owners Radio FM ninety six one, AM eleven seventy.
The answer.
Hey, do you, uh, belong to an association, association or a club? Uh, or any other member based organization with bad websites? Well, it looks old, it's hard to use and just don't help, you know, your, grow your business. Well, maybe you didn't know, but Sage Tree specializes in helping member based organizations. They help see S D C G O and have also helped many companies like the YMCA, National City Chamber of Commerce. And they can help you and your website, uh, membership dues and emails and social media. Leave frustration behind and call Sage Tree today. Getting started is easy. Visit sage tree dot com and click on the schedule an appointment button at sage tree dot com and click on the schedule a call button now.
So we were talking about, uh, Ukraine versus Russia, and you made an extremely interesting, uh, comment about how you're, you're for, you're for civilians and that both, uh, governments are corrupt in, in their own way. And I think that that's fascinating. The first couple of months after the, the war started a couple of years ago, we were seeing, you know, everybody was, you know, they had Ukrainian flags and they were on their fingernails and on their Facebook profile picture. And they were comparing, uh, what's his name? What's, who's the president, the Ukrainian guy?
Zelensky.
Zelensky. They were comparing him to the founding fathers of the United States.
That's interesting. I've never seen that.
Oh, yeah. They're like, oh, this guy's out there fighting for democracy. He's like Thomas Jefferson and George Washington all in one. And I'm like, what? Are you great? Well, I don't wanna influence the question. But what were your thoughts when you were seeing everybody siding with, you know, like, hey, Ukraine is this, you know, it's important for us to defend the government of Ukraine. What were your thoughts on that?
Well, once I moved here, I've been all, obviously listening to some of the Ukrainian news that's happening there way before the war started. I actually, they, so there were a lot of talks that war will start eventually. And I remember that date. I think it was February sixteenth. I saw, I, I like stalking, um, flight radar twenty four. It's like the planes and you can see how US drone was flying at the border of, uh, Poland and Ukraine and then flying at the Black Sea. So at that time. So at that time, I already felt like, oh, I guess something is coming up.
Something's happening.
Something is happening. I was gonna launch my podcast on February 21st. And I posted, uh, the first, I was gonna post the first episode about, uh, Russia, Ukraine invasion. And then people started like, are you, are you, like, you're gonna tell me that the war is starting? I was not saying like the war is gonna start, but then I was like, wait, maybe. And I was attending one of the, I would say programs, uh, I don't know if you know, um, Transparency Foundation? I think it was, it's Carl DeMao.
Sure.
Yeah, and I was on Zoom and, uh, Jennifer Jacobs asked me.
Oh, I love her.
Do you think, uh, the war will start? And I was like, no, I don't think so. They have been talking about it for a while at this point. I don't know. Half an hour later, after Zoom was done, my dad comes out and he says, the war started, call your mom.
Oh, jeez.
And I had shivers, I started panicking and I called my mom, my mom doesn't pick up her phone. I was freaking out. After that, I was calling my grandma, she picked up her phone and she started telling me, hey, like, is this starting? Like she, she didn't understand, she heard the explosions because she lives pretty close to the military base. But it was just shocking, like, you know, like your family is there.
I would imagine.
And the whole thing is just a chaos. I, like, I called my mom after, I was like, uh, my, telling my grandma, can you call my mom? And my mom pips, uh, calls me and she was like, oh, I was sleeping. I don't know what's going on. It's like, really?
Just another day.
Just another day. So after that, I learned like with my family, because they are there and I can he- like actually, you know, hear the real news because of the people that I have there. I realized that there was a lot of media that was lying to everybody.
No, really? The media was lying to everybody.
I mean, hey, if you ever seen the picture of explosion and there was, uh, a lady, pregnant lady, she was like nine months pregnant and they were, uh, bringing her on like the, like.
The stretcher?
The stretcher, yeah. And then after that, they said that she died. They found her a week later, healthy and well with a child. And this whole manipulation was like politics is crazy.
Unbelievable. So how, what led you to, I could talk to you about Ukraine for hours. I definitely have strong opinions. Um, and to me, um, I, I think you put it well though. I used to say, there's no good, this is, this is a war with no good guy. Um, but, but I didn't consider the civilians one in that, and I, I think there's a lot of good guys. There's, and they're, but they're civilians that are being played and, and, and in times killed by two, two governments that, uh, are, are misbehaving. We could talk about Ukraine for hours. I mean, it is so fascinating. I can't believe it's a part of your history and a part of your family history. Uh, you know, and I, I truly wish, you know, your whole family the, the best and, and, uh, it's fascinating your perspective. But what led you to Turning Point, you, is it Turning Point USA?
Yes.
Yeah. What led you to Turning Point?
So I started volunteering, like interning with Republican Party of San Diego County back in 2021. It was after I graduated high school. I did not get into university. I got rejected and I decided, okay, well, I guess community college. And then I was like, what am I supposed to do? I was thinking international business, journalism, politics. So I applied to two internships. One was with Republican Party, the other one was with Carl DeMao Reform California. And, uh, I heard back from Republican Party and that's where my political career started. I started interning, I started networking with a lot of different people. Uh, for the first time, I think my first event with them was when they brought Caitlyn Jenner.
Yeah, I, yeah, I met her. I met her at the, at the Republican Party. Yeah, I met her, I got a picture, uh, with my wife at the time. We got a picture with Caitlyn. She was actually very nice. Yeah, anyway.
Yeah, so after that, I was just, my whole, uh, network of people started expanding in such a big way because I got to talk to so many people about my own story and they were telling me, hey, you have to go and tell that story to everybody else. And I've been, you know, concerned, I was like, do I really have to do it? Do I really want to do it? Is this my future? But now as I'm looking, I was like, I feel like that's something that people have to know because, so we don't, you know, happen another USSR because that, my parents fled, well, not fled, they lived in USSR and then when USSR collapsed, they were like, what am I, what are we supposed to do? This whole influence, they just lost everything. And my grandparents felt it, my parents felt it, there was nothing. And nobody talks about this whole thing. So after that, uh, I started, uh, I believe Turning Point happened, um, October 2022, I went to the Western Regional Conference in Newport Beach. And I met a lot of different people there, my new friends. And, uh, eventually I was approached by, uh, my field representative, Julia. And she was like, you should start your own chapter. I was thinking Grossman College chapter, it's very complicated because that campus is pretty liberal. And, uh, I was like, whoa, maybe I can start San Diego activism hub. In that time, I also was running for student trustee position with, uh, Grossman Cuamaca Community College District and I got elected. In my first board meeting, we finally removed vaccine mandates for students, but the whole stuff.
I didn't know that. Congratulations. Okay.
So after that, uh, we had a whole fight because, uh, they hated my guts a lot. Uh, because I was pushing to remove vaccine mandate for all. And they've been trying to shut me down. They've been telling me that it's none of my business to speak for the faculty and stuff. But I went through the constitution of, uh, college. And in fact, there, it is my business because I'm a col- college student. Without me, without every other student, there won't be college. So that was kind of nonsense for me to hear. They're like, yeah, like honestly, uh, it's none of your business, you should not talk. You should not tell your story.
You have so much going on. So, okay, Turning Point USA, you guys, Charlie Kirk is gonna be here or is here?
So he's gonna be here tomorrow at, uh, 6:30 PM, but the doors are opening at 5:30 and it's gonna be at San Diego State University, Montezuma Hall, so make sure to park, uh, early and come to the line.
So what about your history? Fantastic. Turning Point USA, Charlie Kirk tomorrow at San Diego State, that's fantastic. You've done so much, there's so much to talk to you about, but what, why, what in your history, in the next 48 seconds here, what in your history made you right of center, made you side with the Republican Party?
Well, my traditional values, uh, my discussions at the family table during the dinner, all of that has influenced me into leaning more conservative. Because that's something that represents my own values, uh, as a human. I believe that we have to have a free market, we have to support Second Amendment. One of the important things, uh, as a woman who walks around on campus, I'm scared walking at night. And I wish I had, you know, CCW and, but also our school is prohibited guns, so it's kind of scary, you know? And honestly, I've seen so many people, like homeless people sitting at like my college campus and I'm just scared to walk by.
You're 20.
I'm 20, yeah.
So you can't even, you can't go buy a gun, can you?
I can't even get a CCW, I can't do anything, so guess what?
Even though you're, but wait, wait, you're an adult.
I'm an adult, but I can't get a gun.
You can buy, can you buy, uh, or you, you, people your age can get drafted and go to war?
They can vote, they can, I don't know, do what is called transgender sur- like surgery, like puberty blockers, tattoos, all of that kind of stuff, but I cannot protect myself.
So the role of the government is protect your rights though, isn't it? But, and you're an adult and you're an American, but for some reason.
She's fighting.
That's right. Well, there's something else. I, I will, we'll talk about it next week, but there's another reason I'm, I'm bringing all this up, but I, I, I can't talk about it for, uh, uh, well, till next week, we'll talk about it next week. Sasha is, I'll tell you this, Sasha is absolutely, if you haven't picked up yet, she puts her money where her mouth is. I mean, can you imagine that? Like, most people are like, I didn't get into college I want, I'm just gonna go, uh, you know, whatever.
Going welfare.
I'm gonna go smoke pot on the beach or whatever. Not her, she's taking over the world.
Well, I, see, there was a reason.
Leave some activism for the rest of us.
Yeah, but see, this, all of this is happening for a reason. Isn't that what you kind of believe?
Yeah, I mean, I believe in Jeremiah 29 11 that it happens, God has a plan in all of us.
Yeah, what's Jer- you believe in what? Jeremiah?
Jeremiah.
Jeremiah, well, so it's a Bible verse.
It's a Bible verse.
Oh, well, that Jeremiah.
Have you read that book?
Gotcha, alright.
You thought it was Jeremiah, the guy out in the woods?
I, I'm like, what did I miss? Yeah, I thought he was a bullfrog.
It's on my wallpaper. It says Jeremiah 29 11, for I know the plans I have for you, declares the Lord, plans to prosper you and not to harm you, plans to give you hope and a future.
Well, that's very beautiful. Thank you. I think that's very wise too, so.
You should get that tattoo.
I'll, I'll do that.
Okay, let's take a quick break.
I'll let you pick the word to put it.
Yeah, wait, now, wait till you see this next segment. It's Sam the Gun Man. He's about, he's a little bit older than you.
It's my nephew.
And he is a plethora of knowledge when it comes to guns. You're gonna get a kick out of this. This is Gun Owners Radio FM 961 AM 1170.
The Answer.
As you know, Mike Lindell has a passion to help us get the best night's sleep of our lives. Now, after he invented the world's best pillow, cause that wasn't enough, he created the famous Giza Dream Sheets. They're the best sheets we will ever sleep on. The best night's sleep just got even better because for a limited time, you and I can get a queen.
Forget what university he's going to.
He's not working at the gun store anymore?
Decided to focus on his studies.
On his studies, that's good.
Trying to, trying to get him out of school. He's like 23, he's gotta get his, uh, bachelor's. He's the best guy ever.
And he's just so much fun. Wait, we're gonna let you ask a question?
Yeah. So we'll. But don't ask, don't talk about it. Don't talk about the question because we'll go out over YouTube. Right?
Oh, yeah, YouTube, sorry.
Speaking of YouTube, we got disconnected, but in the, in the chat before we did, there were some people asking about differences in food from the Ukraine to here, like processed and packaged versus like what's, you know?
Oh, yeah.
Like here, yeah.
Completely different, especially fast food here. My family cooks all the time because fast food is not healthy.
Really? You didn't tell us.
GMO whole stuff is like, America is just poisoning Americans. And that's kind of sad to see because for me, I try to stay healthy. We grow, my mom has a beautiful garden, we have over 20 trees or something, some more. And we grow cucumbers, tomatoes, lettuce.
Are you vegetarian?
No, of, of course I love meat. I love meat.
I was just checking.
Yeah, and we, we also get like organic, uh, like eggs from, uh, one of our friends.
Should have told me. I could have brought you eggs. I've got 14 chickens.
Oh, wow.
And the girl that was just, that left here at the last show, I bring her eggs all the time.
Maybe you can drop it off one day.
Well, you can take, keep coming to visit.
Oh, of course.
And you call me and I'll hook you up, because right now our chickens are going bananas. They're laying eggs like crazy. Are yours?
Yeah, they're starting to finally. Yeah, they're, they're not freeloaders much.
He, it warms up?
Yeah.
And they have more eggs?
Yeah, the, the extreme temperatures either way, I don't like it.
They follow my wife like a puppy.
What's your, what's your favorite thing about, uh, what's something totally different that you discovered in, in America as far as cuisine? Is there something where you're like, oh my God, this is way better than.
America, well.
Or no, or are we horrible at cuisine?
Or do you even go out? Do you go out to eat much?
I do go out, but.
Like barbecue? Did you guys have barbecue there?
Hmm, it's called, like I would say, it's called kind of kebab. It's not as barbecue.
Alright folks, welcome back to Gun Owners Radio FM 961 AM 1170.
The Answer.
Hey, if you want gear at an affordable price, you need to check out Condor Outdoors. Condor's mission is to provide you with the highest quality tactical gear to help you tackle any adventure with confidence. Whether you're a military professional or a law enforcement officer, or simply an avid outdoorsman, Condor, uh, products are designed to be versatile, durable and above all reliable. So if you're looking for the best in tactical gear, look no further than Condor Outdoor. Use discount code G O R for a 15% discount off the website. That's condoroutdoor.com and use G O R code for a 15% discount.
Alright, it's time for everybody's favorite segment. Stomp My Nephew. We found out years ago that my nephew Sam, the gunman, uh, is fantastic at trivia, so if you send us a question, uh, and we use it on the air, we will get you a hat or a shirt. And if you stomp my nephew, you're gonna get a couple of tickets to gun prom. Gun prom, we haven't even announced it yet, but it's, uh, October 12th. And it's at the Omni and it's gonna be casino night. You're gonna get to, uh, gamble and possibly win some guns, do all kinds of cool stuff. We're gonna make sure that Sasha gets the gun prom. Have you been to a gun prom yet?
No.
No? Well, we gotta get you to a gun prom, so, um, Sam, what are you doing, man?
Not much. How are you guys?
Fantastic. How old are you now, Sam?
24, last I checked.
24, Sasha, how old are you?
20.
Really? That's interesting. Easy, easy big fella. Sam, you coming out to gun prom?
Um, not sure if my schedule will allow.
That sounds like a yes. Perfect. Can't wait. Okay, my friend Sasha is, uh, originally she was, she was born in Ukraine and she's now with Turning Point USA. And, uh, she's an elected official and she's extremely motivated and.
She's only been in the United States.
Six years.
Six years.
Six years. Can you believe that?
Taken over the world, which is awesome. So, uh, anyway, she's gonna read the question today, Sam, so without further ado, who's, who's the question from?
So it's a question from John from Los Angeles and he asks, who famously used the Giordoni air rifle?
Who famously used the Giordoni air rifle?
John from Los Angeles, thanks for writing in.
He's about to knock this out of the park, I can feel it. Go ahead.
Is it Giordoni? We gotta, we gotta fix this. Is it Giridoni or is it Giordoni?
Giordoni, I think. Um, Mike can, can hear the smugness over the phone. The, uh, so this is, this is, I think about the third time this question has been asked in some form or another. Um, the Lewis and Clark expedition had to pack light, um, for obvious reasons. And so, uh, given that in those days, um, having to carry around kegs of black powder and powder horns and, uh, containers of, of lead balls, um, would have been too much of a logistical strain. So they opted instead for Giordoni air rifles or Garrendoni. I'm, I'm not Italian. I'm sorry, I don't know how to pronounce that.
It's Giordoni, so we're going Giordoni.
They, they were, apparently they, they were, uh, good enough to, uh, to defend themselves against all sorts of wildlife they encountered, such as bears, moose, what have you. Um, air rifles have been used in a professional capacity in the past, uh, at various points. The Austrian army during, I think the mid 18th century, used air rifles as their standard long arm. But, um, air rifles have an inherent limitation of, um, at a certain point to get more muzzle energy, you have to make the bore diameter wider. Um, I can't explain concisely exactly why that is. You'd have to ask your dad because he's the one who understands pneumatic systems. But, um, they were good enough at the time compared to, uh, contemporary firearms.
Sasha, you wanna read the, what the, the question or the answer that they provided?
Okay, so Lewis and Clark famously used the Giordoni air rifle during their expedition. It was invented around 1779 in Austria and featured a magazine fed design and a pre-charged pne- pneumatic.
Pneumatic.
Pneumatic, yeah, cancel that. It was reported to be able to shoot 22 shots on a charge. However, it is, was also reported, it took up to 1,500 strokes on a hand pump to charge the system. The weapon was not only used for hunting, but also for diplomacy, impressing the Native American tribes they encountered. The rapid rate of fire, silent and smokeless operation helped establish their party as a powerful and technologically advanced individuals, helping to broker peaceful agreements.
There, everybody, are you familiar with Lewis and Clark? Do you know what that was? Lewis and Clark, it was an expedition during Thomas Jefferson's, uh, uh, administration where they sent Lewis and Clark and a whole bunch of other people, including Sacagawea, who was a, um, a.
Indian.
An Indian, a native, native, Native American Indian. Um, and, uh, they went to the Pacific Ocean basically and, and charted it out and it was extremely, uh, interesting adventure.
They there for mapping?
They mapped it and they took back samples and all kinds of stuff. It was really an amazing, uh, uh, expedition. But I, I just wanted to talk real quick. I mean, this, this air rifle, it's pretty amazing that they invented this thing. Remember, this is before rubber and they're having to keep pressurized air in a container.
Right.
Without, without rubber to seal it. There's, yeah, there's no gaskets, there's no O-rings.
You have to charge it with 1,500.
1,500 pumps. It's not like you could go out to the garage and just get your, 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 your bike tire.
Yeah, your tire pump.
They invented this whole thing and they made it so powerful that you could take out North American game with an air rifle. Pretty phenomenal. I mean, it's pretty phenomenal. They would also take, uh, they would take, so they'd say, alright, to have like say 22 lead projectiles, you need this much powder. So they'd make a container out of lead that had the exact amount of lead that you needed and they'd fill it with the exact amount of powder that you needed. lead projectiles, you need this much powder. So they'd make a container out of lead that had the exact amount of lead that you needed and they'd fill it with the exact amount of powder that you needed. And that's how they transported it. This whole thing was phen- amazingly.
It's a great book.
Yeah, it was. Sam, you got it right. What do you think, man? You have anything to add about the air rifle or Lewis and Clark?
No, that about summed it up. As you mentioned, they didn't have good rubber like we do now. So, um, any, any type of air rifle or pneumatic system at the time had to be sealed with leather, uh, which presents its own set of issues.
Uh, I do have a follow up question with Sam about the Lewis and Clark expedition here. So would they have allowed Sacagawea to actually shoot with this rifle or not at that time, since they kind of viewed women differently at that time?
I'm not sure. Um, and I would, I would suspect probably not. And for, um, possibly two reasons. Again, don't quote me on this because I, I don't have a source that, that backs this up. Um, I would suspect that even regardless of, of any prejudice they may or may not have, ha- have had towards Sacagawea. Um, she would not have had any firearms training or, well, it's not a firearm. She would not have, uh, have had any, um,
Weapons, weapons training?
Using projectile weapons, uh, other than, um, the anything pre-industrial. She, she wouldn't have known how to use any type of gun. So, um, I suspect she would not have been using one.
Plus, she was hauling a
Don't quote me on that.
She was hauling a baby the whole time, too. That's the other thing.
That would, yes. That would also present some issues.
And I'm sure she was brought along to basically take care of the two men, cook, clean.
No, she was a guide.
Well, she was the guide.
She was a guide. And it wasn't just two men. There, it was like, it was so complicated. It was like thirty or forty guys and they would do things like build a boat, sail down a river and then deconstruct the boat, go to another body of water, rebuild the boat. I, it was, it was something else. Oh, my God, it was phenomenal. It was really, really amazing. So what do you think, Sasha? Pretty cool?
Definitely interesting that, and I didn't know that before.
I know, right?
Don't feel bad. We, don't feel bad. We never know. Any of these questions that come up, we don't, and we never tell him the answer.
The question.
Or the question.
Or the answer. We don't tell him any of that.
We don't tell him a thing.
We just tell him to call in.
Yeah, but we can always tell by the tone of his voice after we've given him the question, whether he's gonna get it or not.
Well, I, how much has your grandfather talked to you about the Lewis and Clark expedition?
Um, surprisingly, not a lot. Though, um, if he's listening to this, he'll, he'll probably, uh, that'll probably change.
You're gonna get a lecture.
I like that. I think his, his first thought is surprisingly not.
Well, that's where I got a lot of my Lewis and Clark. A lot of my Lewis and Clark, uh, uh, knowledge came from his grandfather. So. All right, my friend. Awesome job, Sam. Uh, go ahead and, uh, mark your calendar for this October. We'll get you some flights and, uh, appreciate your time.
He's got an airplane.
Yeah, there you go. He's a pilot. Dude's been, he's been flying since he was like five or six.
Wow.
Yeah, yeah. He's a pilot.
Yeah, he's just as industrious as you are.
Yeah. You ever been up in a plane?
Well, not the private one.
Not a private one?
But you got in a big one, huh?
So, yeah, be a lot of fun.
Before the door fell off.
All right, Sam. We gotta, we gotta charter flight for you when you come out here.
All right. Thanks a lot, buddy.
Thanks for watching this episode from Gun Owners Radio. If you're watching mainstream media, you're not getting the truth about guns and the Second Amendment. Gun Owners Radio is the easiest way to stay on top of the Second Amendment fight, the fight for your self-defense rights. You can watch our live stream on YouTube every Sunday from four to six PM California time. Or if you're in San Diego, AM eleven seventy, FM ninety six one, The Answer. We're also available on your favorite podcast platform. Just do a search for Gun Owners Radio and you'll find our show. Don't forget to support our sponsors. Click on the links in the show notes and support the businesses that support your Second Amendment rights. Like and subscribe to help defend and restore the Second Amendment, not just in California, but across the country.